...2019 Meeting of the County Board of Education. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Mr. Curtis, if you would, call the roll, please.
Mr. Daniel?
Here.
Mr. Elroy?
Here.
Mr. Fan?
Here.
Mr. Turner?
Here.
Chairman Sanders?
Here.
Chairman Fatt?
Here.
Not absent yet, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Curtis. This time, we'll turn it over to you for our presentation of Employee of the Month and recognition of our retiring staff.
Eric O., I don't need to mic anyway, as most of you will probably attest. But, good evening, hope everybody's doing well tonight, thank you for being here at our May 9th recognition ceremony. Thank you, I'd first thank those individuals, the young ones, the freshmen alike, and our central office staff, Ms. Jennifer and her team, did a great job with the staff. Mr. Chairman, maybe there'll be a, as a cut catch back there, maybe there'll be more like so over here. So there's plenty, so very good. This evening, as I recognize, this is our time to recognize staff, and particularly those individuals who have served in County County schools for many, many years. And tonight, we'd like to honor, make an effort to honor these individuals. Each individual, we have some high certificate form, these are retirees, our first category of retirees, and we thank these individuals, with many, most, all these individuals on this list, you've known many, many, many years. And we appreciate that, and appreciate the effort of these individuals serving in our individual schools and our individual responsibilities. So, thank you. Before we start, let's just, since it is teacher appreciation week, would, let's just honor all of these right now with Oliver Teacher of Harlem, please. Our retirees this year is Ms. Barbara Parker, Ms. Parker is not here tonight, we honor her years of service in County County schools. We also honor the next honorary, and she got out of Dodge pretty quick, back last year in, in August, September timeframe, and she helped her predecessor, and we really appreciate this lady who has been in County County schools for forty-some odd years, forty-one years, and that is Dr. Regina Merriman. Are you doing individuals or can you get them all, though?
All of them, yes, I'm good.
Okay, absolutely. She come out of retirement just to be here tonight. We'll leave one with all of you, all of you here just along in a few minutes, so just kind of hang tight, and we'll get us all a picture here in just a minute. Our next honorary is a long time, four thirty-four year veteran of our schools, and this is Ms. Karen Cook of Eastside, so Ms. Karen? I will lecture, Ms. Connie, make sure we get that certificate to, to Ms. Karen. And the next individual, I got to know very quickly in my career. She was the special education educator at Westside when I started, and she is still a long time with us in County County schools, in fact, she's going to come back and work for us part-time next year. Thank you, and that's Ms. Cindy Basham. We appreciate Cindy a whole lot. You know, Mr. Chairman, I didn't get flagged on any IEDs at Westside, so I was, you must tell me right about my modifications. Next individual is kind of a surprise to several individuals, and this gentleman has been with us quite a while, too. He was with us and left us and come back to us, and that is Woodbury Grammar School Principal, Mr. Ray B. John. Last but not least, on this list of retirees, I hate to see her go, because our support staff, and many of these principals will tell you, as well as supervisors will tell you, your support staff can make or break your school. Your secretary is essential in your school. I'm saying so not by principals, definitely. Without the secretaries, we would fall apart, and I am saddened to announce and glad for her, and that is Ms. Janice Champion of Eastside. Janice, Janice has been with us twenty-three years as a secretary. Twenty-six, wait there. So they put it wrong on the certificate, wait, 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 hold on here. Janice, I'm doing something I normally don't do, I print another one, but I put twenty-six on this one, so thank you so much, twenty-six years, putting up with multiple principals at Eastside. Thank you, Ms. Janice. We appreciate all of our retirees, and we wish them well in the next chapter of their journey, and I'm sure Ms. Connie will have her own speed dial on, Ms. Janice. Let's go to perfect attendance. The individuals that I'm about to call out tonight have been with us every single day of this school year, including today, so we were checking up on it, but we would like to thank these individuals, they have really, they've been here every single day, they have worked hard, and I don't know about you, but a hundred and eighty days with us doing what we do is incredible. Our first honorary tonight, this is our County County High School Athletic Director and also Biology Teacher at County County High School, Mr. Matt Cagle. Also from County County High School, Ms. Nichols doing something right up there, keep these folks working every single day, and this young lady does a lot of hard work, and spearheaded several of her projects for us, complete blood drives, AIGs in our CNA program, and that is Ms. Wendy Cook. This next individual has been with us a long, long time. I'm not saying she's old, I'm not saying that, but I have the utmost respect of the following individual who's been with us a long time, and I appreciate her a whole lot every day for her mathematical skills, and that is Norma Lewis. See, I can say that now and get by with it, I used to couldn't. This individual comes from, that was from County County High School on these, and this individual is a cook who cooks every day, all the time for our students, and she's been there every single day this year, and that's Ms. Pat Bryson of Auburn School. I'm with something about Auburn town, that they want to be there every single day, and our next recipient is also one of those secretaries that works hard every single day and being there for our students literally every day, Ms. Cheryl Priscill. Cheryl's getting familiar with this, she was ever employee of the month. Well, that's okay, been a picture. Our last person here for perfect attendance, well, I'm sorry, the next, the last person for perfect attendance is also from Auburn, and that is, and she could not be here, and I wrote me an, an email, and that is Ms. Teresa Scott, so we have free side, so that's our next person. And assistants are very special again, too, and we have one who was our Employee of the Month, Ms. Fitz, the first Employee of the Month, and this lady continues to have a spotless record in regarding to attendance, and that is Ms. Brenda Motley. Let's give her a round of applause. One thing is when we first start teaching, that we do in County County schools, and Dr. Melton assists us, as well as all the supervisors, and that is our first-year teachers who work hard in the first year in their profession. My principal is here tonight, it was, when I did my first year in nineteen eighty-six, and I learned a lot, I call it my baptism of fire, I learned a lot, and Ronald Basham kept me, so thank you, Ronald, for, for keeping me. And these individuals go through training every single, every single year, in the first year, we have, we have months of training, and these individuals have completed their month of training, and we call it the introduction to their first year to the profession. My co-governance will come up, Ms. Jessica Stevens, Jessica's here tonight. Ms. Eliana Sizemore, from Woodland. Jessica, by the way, is here at Woodbury Grammar as our counselor, and Eliana is an interventionist at Woodland. Our next one is Ms. Mary Fraser from Woodbury Grammar School. Ms. April Bibens of the high school, County County High School English Teacher. Other honorary is Danielle Posey, who was Posey. Next individual who has completed his first year with us, and he had a tough road following the, Lee Green, come on down, Mr. Green. Also, Ms. Randy Sullivan. This lady, special education pre-K, so wow, she's got on, going, going, going every time. Other one, from County County High School, our new business teacher at County County High School, that's Mr. Cliff Walker, Walker is busy man, he's actually doing some soccer things tonight as the soccer coach, and could not be with us. And so, last but not least, and that is our new special education teacher at Short Mountain School, is Bobby Ford. I have one more presentation tonight. Every, every month, we do Employees of the Month, and we started that at the first of the year, and I would certainly like to recognize these two individuals tonight who have done an exceptional job. One is an instructional coach, one is our RTI coordinator, but on top of being an instructional coach, RTI coordinator, Ms. Stephanie Alexander is our, is our instructional coach for the upper grades, and Angie Fan is the RTI coordinator, both are veteran teachers, been with us for, for several years, and do a fantastic job in their respective roles. But as part of their assignment in their respective duties, they assisted us at the central office in doing our district improvement plan. These two, these two ladies were exceptional in helping us get that plan in and on time. That's a crunch time for us, it's in February, that's Wednesday, it is a crunch time, teachers, principals understand that, too, they're just going to have due, it is crunch time. And many of us are doing multiple duties, these two ladies went beyond and aided us invaguably in the production of our E-Plan, District Improvement Plan, and that's Stephanie Alexander and Angie, Stephanie and Angie, both come up. Keep my hand up here every day, let's just follow it for us. We appreciate them very, very much. This time, I'd like our retirees to come back in, all of the retirees, let's get a group picture, all of the retirees, we get a group shot right here on the front, is that going to be good, right here in front of the board?
Yeah.
Okay, so if y'all go. And Bonnie, hide this picture, so we'll let the board be in this picture. So I'm going to just get the lineup here, all of the retirees. Okay, thank you. All of our first-year teachers, let's go to perfect attendance, thanks, perfect attendance, y'all come back up. And now we'll get our first-year, our first-year, uh, duty of the profession, we can get y'all. My first-year teacher. I've got one more to recognize, honors, and that is our tenure teachers, they were, they were elected by the board, they got their tenure from the board, so where's our tenure teachers, come on up. Tenure teachers, come on up. We got Ms. Sizemore. And we got Mini Gentry, I'm missing another one, too, that's not here. That's Paige Holt, so sorry Paige wasn't here, but let's get, let's get another picture with them. Congratulations.
This means I get to keep him forever, right?
Well, I will see myself.
All right, congratulations to each of you on your accomplishments, and definitely thank you for all that you do in our schools each day. The comments and expressions of individual board members during the board meeting represent the maker's personal position on the matter or matters being, such comments and expressions of opinion do not necessarily represent the position of the County Board of Education. Anyone wishing to report the meeting, please notify us at this time, and bring your device to the front for better sound quality. We have our media up front, okay. With that, we will begin with item one on our agenda, which is, I said, the board's agenda, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion to move out of three, the director's evaluation in any business pertaining to the, the reward.
Okay.
I think.
Motion's been made, and second, call the roll, please.
Much may be by Mr. Daniel Seager, by Mr. Turner, to move number three, director's evaluation to approve, to item number one. Mr. Daniel? Motion made to move item three, director's evaluation to item number one, and any business pertaining to the director's contract. Mr. Daniel? Mr. Elroy?
Aye.
Mr. Fan?
Aye.
Mr. Turner?
Aye.
Chairman Sanders?
No.
Chairman Forreys, no name, one name.
Motion taken. With that, this time, we will discuss the results of the director's evaluation. We look at those in our packet as well as workshop on Tuesday night. See the overall scores there, that Mr. Douglas took the time to tab, tabulate for us, excuse me, and Doug, we do appreciate you doing that for us. Mr. Curtis has let us know that he had a chance to review this information as well, so that is there for your viewing and records.
Mr. Chairman, can you read out his scores there, left, right, a little bit there?
Sure. The, how does it sound, Maureen? The way the evaluation is, all many pages, thank you, so it's looking through. From the once, section B, four point one three, section two, the overall score, this is from the board members, the overall scores, section two is three point two two. The score for the principals and supervisors on the twenty questions that they were given was a four point eight one. The overall scores, combining the board members' evaluations and the principals and supervisors' evaluation, for administration, overall score was a four point eight one, which has a weighting of fifty percent, as previously voted on by the board. Section B, board observation, has an overall score of four point one three, which has a total weighting and evaluation of twenty-five percent. And section C, achievement, has an overall score of three point two two, with a weighting of twenty-five percent, or combined percentage of a hundred. So, multiplying those, for those of you that can't do that, and, let me recap again, four point eight one with a weighting of fifty percent gives a score of two point four oh. An overall evaluation of four point one three with a weighting of twenty-five percent gives a score of one point oh three. Section C, achievement, with an overall score of three point two two with a weighting of twenty-five percent gives a score of zero point eight one. Tabulating all the numbers for an overall evaluation score of four point two four, that is on a scale of one to five, five being the highest, one being the lowest.
Though this tabulation according to scales for TSBA?
Yes. Yes, um, the evaluation. The evaluation, uh, used was provided by TSBA, which is, uh, an evaluation instrument that is no cost to, uh, board members, and we have previously voted to use that, agreement with Curtis. Five represents significantly above expectations, four above expectations, three at expectations, three below expectations, and one significantly below expectations. And again, uh, score for administrator survey, fifty percent, board observation will add twenty-five percent, achievement of board goals, fifty percent, twenty-five percent. And, uh, this evaluation process was done and submitted to Mr. Curtis from the board members by December thirty-one, twenty eighteen. All board members met individually, you see their signatures and whatnot, as we talked previously, the administrator's evaluation was done unanimously, excuse me, anonymously, thank you, uh, by written evaluation, and those were turned in to Mr. Douglas Jennings there at Central Office, and then tabulated those for us.
With that being said, Mr. Curtis, he scored rates of four, or scores above expectations. Mr. Curtis, I'd like to make a motion to extend the contract, contract made for here two years.
The current contract, Mr. Curtis, is twenty twenty-one, if there aren't?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. That'll make expire, Mr. Chairman, on June three zero twenty, uh, twenty-three.
It's providing on a long-term contract, which is fixed and instituted by the board.